Good evening. I am going to call to order the October 2nd, 2023 School Committee Meeting. I'm going to read the statement. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording tonight, and we are also recording on Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience recording? Okay, and I don't see any participants, so I will move on to item number two. So approval of the minutes, we have a few minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting of July 10th, 2023.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on September 11th, 2023.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Although I was not in attendance, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Workshop held on September 23rd.
I will second.
Any discussion?
I have discussions. I have, there's two copies in your folder is one that says revised. I had on that copy, I had Michelle is making a motion, and I changed it to Carrie.
Okay. Great. Anything else? All those in favor with the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, so moving on to item three, this is the questions and comments section of our meeting. We typically set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments during the new business items that are on the agenda. If there isn't anyone who would like to raise a question or comment, if you could raise your hand now, and then I will proceed with the statement if there is. Otherwise, I'll skip it. No? Okay. So we're going to skip on to item four, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Adams?
Great. We have a couple things we wanted to celebrate first. The Plymouth River and South Elementary. Since we met last, we're both recognized by the state as schools of recognition. This is one, there were two. Hingham was lucky, proud to have two out of 66 student schools that received such a recognition in the state. South Elementary School earned 100% of its progress towards improvement, and 99% fell at the 99 percentile for accountability. And Plymouth River reached 91% of its improvement targets and earned 95% of its accountability performance. So we're incredibly proud of both the students and staff that are working to meet the needs of all students. So we are proud of that accomplishment.
Kudos to.
Yep, Mary Eastwood in particular. That's a nice way to go out.
She would say the same thing. Go out with bang.
Exactly.
We also launched the survey for input of the new naming of the new elementary school. We have a couple hundred responses already, and we look forward to sharing those results at an upcoming meeting. The survey is open through the end of October, so folks keep an eye out for it. In addition, we're seeking out feedback from students at Foster, the students at the middle school and high school, we've reached out to them via the survey, as well as the schoolside council at Foster and the PTO at Foster as well, so make sure that they have input as well. Common question is, why not just rename it the Foster? Town Bylaw says that it's a new building that needs to be voted by town meeting, so this is to meet the requirement of the Town Bylaw. Foster can be one of the choices the community responds with, as well as other ideas that'll come before the School Committee to decide upon a warrant that will then go to the Select Board, the Advisory, and then Town Meeting.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I had that written down to talk about.
Comment ask question, yes.
And if I can also add, this was something that was discussed with the Town's Legal Council, so this is also coming from Town Legal Council. Thank you.
So survey open till the end of October. Lots of opportunities to give input. Also in your packet was the professional development catalog for the 23-24 school year, just to highlight some of the offerings that are offered for our professional development for our staff. Grateful to Katie Roberts for organizing and putting that together.
No, it's a team effort, so I'm grateful to the directors and principals and all of the specialists who've contributed to the catalog as well, so.
Looks great. I feel like detail, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 4.1 was a personnel report, which included a list of new employees, appointments between the period of September to October today. It included a list of paraeducators, there were 17 paraeducators, an English teacher for the high school, as well as a KIA staff member. In addition, resignations were some food service workers and a KIA teacher, and one transfer of a paraeducator. Open positions, we have approximately 10 parapositions. Again, the middle school is the area that we continue to struggle to find all the staff needed. We are still in need of two bus drivers and one van driver and some custodial facility staff, although Katie St. Clair said she had some great leads and was following up to get those positions open. In addition, we have one school nurse open at the middle school. We've offered the position to a couple of people. We have a final candidate, Mr. Smith, but we're hopeful to have her or them onboard next week, so. Okay, questions?
Just with the parents, do we have, for those over 10, do we have anybody in process in terms of like interviews, or are we, how many-ish are sort of potentially hirable?
Is there an end in sight, in other words?
We were just talking about this earlier today. Last year, we sort of struggled a lot at the high school to get all the pairs here, and now the high school seems to be in good shape, and the emphasis has sort of shifted to the middle school. So we're hiring and interviewing, we've posted, we're looking to post on Mass Hire. We have a job fair we're going to do at the Senior Center, but we're also recruiting for substitutes as well at that point. So we're trying to be as creative as possible. We reposted them on School Spring, talked to the PTOs as well, and had some discussion on Friday about that issue too, and sort of thinking creatively.
Sure.
Sorry, I did have one question, because I actually had two people ask me. They were mentioning that one tough thing, particularly at the middle school is the start time. So I did it, like just that it was early and they had kids to get off themselves, and they wondered, is there, is there any opportunity for a position that could start at like an 8:00 AM versus a 7:20? Yeah? Okay.
We've considered that, and there are some places where by choice folks have wanted to only work part-time.
Okay.
In some other buildings, but we've done that in the past.
All right. Thanks.
I think we have one such position at South or Foster, I think it's Foster, we just looked at that today. There's one such position at Foster.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do the bus drivers or?
Oh.
In terms of our sign?
Yes. We have some good leads for bus drivers that we needed. Great.
Are the majority asked for those school positions?
Yes, okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Next, there was a little memo about a preschool working group. This group, we know that the Foster will have additional spaces for preschool classrooms, so, and we know that we've discussed, and through the Foster Building Project, we discussed the need for the East program to better meet the needs of special needs students. So this group is convening to sort of look at possible staffing models, possible funding models, tuition rates, program needs that would meet the needs of the students with special needs, and help bring us better into compliance, as well as in preparation for budget, what might be needed budget-wise in order to bring us into compliance with our preschool, pre-K programming. The group is meeting every two weeks. It's a lot of data collection, a lot of brainstorming around the needs of the students, looking at numbers, doing some research in local programs that are available, as well as local programs that and their models to service students with disabilities. The group will come up with some recommendations that will be part of the budget process, sort of outlining what's needed in order to fund the program for the coming school year, as well as documenting its data process. We will seek feedback from the Special Ed Subcommittee, we hope to bring some of our information there, as well as CPAC, as well as the Tom White PTO, in order to seek some feedback as well about the design of the program going forward.
I'd like to, if I could reach out to CPAC to, to work with that, and also just encourage you to talk to some parents of the typical peers who have recently gone through the program. They might have some feedback on logistics and things that, just looking from that lens is important.
Yes, we're going to do a survey of parents in the current program and in K and 1 to get their feedback. As well as, as we get a little closer, we'll seek out some feedback from the schoolside councils and the PTOs as well, so.
Great.
Again, we're just in the planning stages and hoping to create a model that will help meet the needs of the students and bring that as part of the budget process about what's needed in order to fund it, what the tuition rates would need to be. This also includes a discussion around the program as it exists at East, but also KIA preschool and pre-K programming. Okay? Yep. All right. The third thing I had was just a little tad longer, but important. At the next meeting, we'll share some detail around MCAS. This is some data around accountability, our Accountability Report. And I'll just briefly, I just want to highlight a couple things as you go through and sort of explain, because it's a long document and sometimes complicated, but I'll try to briefly explain some portions of it, and just go into a little bit of detail. When you look at the Mass Accountability System, you kind of get, you have these buckets of places where you can get points, and if, it depends if you're a non-high school or in high school, how the points get weighted. But in the Accountability System, there are these buckets, and you get a certain amount of points on the bucket depending if you've met the targets or not. It's looking at achievement, the growth of students, high school completion, if it's a high school, progress towards English proficiency, if you have a large number of English language learners, which is not applicable in Hingham, chronic absenteeism, and then advanced coursework placement. And so, non-high school, you'll see the percentages, you know, the schools get percentage 60%, 67.5 if you have no ELLs, 22.5 for student growth, and then absenteeism. Sure, if you go on to the next one? So you'll see that percentage breakout if you're a non-high school, and then on the next one, you'll see the percentage, if you're a high school, how the percentage breaks up if you're not an ELL. So that's where those accountability pieces come up. In the next slide, you'll see also, no, I think you went backwards. No, go ahead, one more. Thank you. You'll see in the document, it talks about targets that were made. It'll use the term recovery path and path forward. The state sets targets for each of these areas for schools, and the recovery path is meant whether you've met that target that they set for recovery from COVID. If that target was too low, if we've already met that target, or you surpassed that target, they set a new target for you, because then we always have to keep moving forward, and that's called path forward. So sometimes in the document, you'll see recovery path, whether we met or exceeded that target. That means that group declined during COVID, and it needs to, we need to meet that target first. It set another target for us to meet because that group declined during that COVID era. And a path forward means we've exceeded that already, and they needed to set a new goal in order to bring us closer to the 2019 Accountability Data. Does that make sense? So you'll see recovery path, and then you'll see path forward. Then you'll see for ELA achievement, both non-high school and high school data, you'll see again that reason over there, recovery path, exceeded the target, or we met the target, and you'll see areas where we met the target and exceeded the target. At the high school, you'll see the first time in ELA, path forward, where you exceeded the target. Again, that was a goal where we had already met the recovery path, or that target was just too low. So that's for the high school. And then you'll also see the same data for math. For non-high school, where we've exceeded or met the target for particular subgroups, and then high school as well. There was, we shared this data at the Educational Programming Subcommittee, and there was a question around lowest performing as a subgroup. That's a subgroup that you'll see in some cases where the state has taken the data, and it's taken the lowest 25% of our students. So it's put all the student scores in like a line, and it takes the bottom 25% in order to determine what that group is. So usually, that consists of students who might have had a warning or needs improvement on MCAS.
What does path forward decline mean for high needs?
Path forward means that target that they set, because the target was, the recovery path target was too low, and that means we declined a bit in that particular group. So that you'd see that in the high needs and the low income, in some cases. When we share the data in about two weeks with a digger, deeper dive into that, you'll see us talk about high needs and low income as a specific subgroup in some grades where we need to continue to focus. And then you'll see for science, some data. This is one of those places where you'll see a decline for also our low-income group, subgroup for non-high school, and then at the high school, you'll see a decline for high needs. Path forward declined. The other, the next area that we can look at is student growth, and you'll see in student growth that there are areas that's often called student growth percentile, and were rated according to how students grew. You'll see in the data overall that we tend to have typical growth high, which is a good place to be. For the most part, you'll see that's the case. For ELA, at the non-high school, you'll see we had typical growth high across all the subgroups. At the high school, you'll see that we had typical growth at all levels. High needs had a lower, a little bit of a lower growth. And then in math, you'll also see for non-high schools, typical growth high, as well as the high school, where you'll see typical growth high or exceeded typical growth. The next area is the four-year graduation rate. Obviously, that's just data for the high school, where we exceeded the target in some subgroups or improved below target. The high school also has another indicator called extended engagement. This is the ability to engage kids who might not graduate in four years, and our ability to get them to graduate. I think one of the challenges with some of this data is that the subgroup gets a little smaller, especially some of these other low-income students with disabilities, because you're talking about, the majority of our students are graduating in four years, and some, a very small number are needing additional, an additional year or an additional couple of years. And then you'll also see the dropout rate, though there is a decline. Again, this is a very small group of students, so this is probably one student that we're talking about. The next area is absenteeism. You'll see that for non-high schools, we exceeded the target or improved below the And then at the high school, exceeded the target, or there was no change or met the And then the last piece is advanced coursework, in which, again, that's only for the high school. You'll see that we exceeded the target, there was a decline around some of the subgroups. Again, this is a smaller, this is a smaller subgroup, because it's only talking about 11th and 12th grade. It probably reflects just a few students. We've talked about at, as we were going through the summer or the spring, around our opening up dual enrollment classes at the middle school, at the high school. So we're excited about that as a possibility for students to have the opportunity to do advanced coursework. Their AP courses count for this, by the state, as well as dual enrollment courses, as well as international baccalaureate, which we don't have any such programs.
So math.
Yes, and math, one of the reasons you'll see, when you, if you dig into the data, you'll see that math is often higher than ELA. Math has a very long list of courses that count as advanced placement, as advanced coursework. ELA only has two, and it's AP courses. So students taking, for example, linear algebra or statistics will count as advanced coursework, even though it's not an AP course. So math has many more options that they consider advanced coursework. Remember, the goal of the state and kind of including this is that there, the goal is to give students, if they desire, an opportunity to take a college-level course at the high school level, to know that if they want to go further into college, they can, because they've had the experience at high school of what it's like to take a college-level course. And that's the goal, and that's the goal of advanced placement courses as well. And the last one was the school accountability ratings for each of the schools. We had, all of the schools met or exceeded targets. East Elementary was making substantial progress towards its targets.
I think the questions that I have will be answered in a couple weeks as we drill down into the student data, so.
Yeah. We'll drill down into some of the subgroup data, as well as some next steps that are being taken to sort of support areas that need, to continue to, so we're proud of a lot that was reflected there, as well as cognizant of any areas where we need to continue to work on. Great. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Parents received the MCAS? Are they going out soon?
Just arrived. Just arrived. Friday at 5:00 PM, as we were leaving, so yes, they just arrived here, and they'll be heading out to the schools for distribution, so.
Okay. They'll be coming home soon.
Next item on the agenda is communication, so 5.1 communications received by the superintendent.
One thing we had in your packet was a letter that will be going home to parents of students in K through, K through two?
K through two, correct?
K through three.
Three.
K through three. K through three, misspoke. K through three about the early literacy screenings that are happening, that have already happened, that help us comply with the dyslexia screening from the state. It's not new assessments that are being done, but we're required to inform parents that their child was screened for early literacy, and that if they were identified with needing additional supports, they'll be getting more information that their child was identified in need of additional supports, and what those supports will look like. So this just informs parents that we're doing early literacy screening, that it happens two other times during the school year, as well as what the data, what the assessments are, and if there is a concern, they'll shortly learn about that in the coming few days.
Do we have, I know there was some talk about having CPAC brochures or information that they were creating, I didn't know if that's happened yet, and if you know that, Matt?
I would say that I think a lot of parents would, might get the notice and be sort of thunderstruck by seeing that their kids need services. I think having a CPAC brochure, giving some support, I know we're giving a lot of information and school-based support as well, but.
Our hope is to share the information and then make sure that parents have an opportunity to connect with their child's teacher.
Perfect.
Because they're going to be the best able to, and/or the school, the reading specialist and all the supports that are available, so that they can get firsthand information about what's being, because each case is so individual, they can get firsthand information about how their child's needs are going to be met.
I'm just feeling how jarring that letter might be to some parents, and should be prepared with support.
Okay. 5.2, we've got student communications, we've got Alex back. Welcome, welcome to the new year. Want to see if you have anything to report.
I don't have anything major to report. Freshmen have elected a representative, and we will be meeting this week.
Great, awesome, thank you. 5.3, I do have one thing. As some know, September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and September 22nd is specifically Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day. We lost a member of our community to suicide last summer, Sergeant Matthew Partika. He was part of the United States Marine Corps. Rick Swanson graciously offered to raise the Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Flag, also known as the SAR flag at the high school. On the 22nd, Director of Veteran Services Keith Germain was able to raise the flag along with another member of the military. The flag raising was attended by several students and administrators, school committee members, and the parents of Sergeant Partika, who were also very appreciative of the event. I wanted to let you know, we received a letter from Keith Germain thanking us for supporting and honoring this fallen US Marine. But that was all I had. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, all right. Okay, so moving over to item six, unfinished business, we don't have anything, so we'll move over to item seven. 7.1 to receive an update on school improvement plan, East Elementary, and act as appropriate. We've got Jonathan Hawes. Welcome.
Hey, everyone. Happy to be updating you all tonight. East Elementary's made some really great gains towards the action steps that we set out in our school improvement plan last year. The goals circle around four areas, communications and resources, analyzing student performance, safe and inclusive environments, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I'll touch upon some of the action steps that we've either completed or that are well in progress within each of those goals. Goal one, focused on communication and resources to our parent community. We have completed many of these action items. At the outset of the year, we took an opportunity to install some new communication streams, making sure that our weekly newsletters were robust and included information not only from the community, but the professional development or learning that was happening within our classrooms. And based on the feedback that we've, we've received from, from families, that resource is something that not only they look forward to, but provides them truly some insight into what's happening within our school, and what's happening with either some of the central focus areas at different times of the year. We also provided the parent community an opportunity to give us feedback, both about our communication, and also at the beginning of last year, we wanted some feedback on our curriculum night. Was it meeting the needs? Was it time well- Was it meeting the needs, um, was it time well spent? Were there specific focus areas that, uh, our parents wanted to hear about? Uh, or was there something that we were spending time on that wasn't, uh, meaningful or well-received? And that was really helpful, um, and exercise for, for Dr. Donovan, my assistant principal and I, uh, to review this August and to help shape this year's, uh, curriculum night information. Um, was, you know, really geared towards the specific areas that our parents shaped. Um, so we were happy to continue with that type of probing, finding out what they're interested in and, and making sure that we're representing that. In addition to the weekly information that we provide, professional development information that we provide, uh, we also took some time over the course of the year to provide specific information um, to specific subjects like, um, the MCAS information overview, which was well-received in March. This was intended to sort of be like an MCAS 101. If you are a third-grade parent and hadn't yet experienced, uh, the MCAS test, the intention behind that was to not only have them participate in some live practice sessions with, uh, students in session as well, uh, but to also just give a taste of the student experience over the, what amounts to, you know, essentially a school week's worth of testing. So we had an opportunity to represent their student experience, to show parents the types of questions that their students were going to be engaging with on the test, and just to hear some questions and/or take some, some feedback. Uh, we, again, felt that was really well-received, uh, and something we'll continue to put in place moving forward. In addition to the school-wide communication, the classrooms and/or our team of specialists um, are also providing similar communication. They're updating parents regularly about what's going on in their learning spaces. They're updating parents regularly about thematic things, uh, and what is going on when the students go to their specialist classes. Goal number two is about analyzing student performance. Relative to student performance, um, first, we took the, the action steps to review our, our past performance. Um, being new to East Elementary School, uh, the data that we received from last year's performance was something that was helpful for, for myself, uh, and for a couple of new structures that are in place. Um, within non-MCAS grades, we were installing the MTSS system last year for both RTI and TRI, uh, sorry, for TRI and TMI, um, but also for our grades three through five, providing some, some focused analysis based on MCAS performance. My personal student learning goal was shaped relative to an area of growth within the fifth-grade population last year. So the basic, the, the fifth-grade data highlighted, uh, through some historical perspective, an area within two specific strands that I wanted to focus on, uh, as not only a goal for, for mine, but to task my fifth-grade team to provide some practical applications and some hands-on experiences uh, within these two particular strands. So that's represented here in, in our action steps to develop goals, uh, for some specific subsets of students, to make sure that we're providing support in class and through the TMI, but also giving general awareness, uh, through our grades three through five teams of the areas of either historical, uh, growth or areas that, uh, are things to celebrate and sort of going through that analysis and asking those questions about how are we doing this well? And when we identify, uh, a deficit, how are we going to address it? And, and we did that through some action planning last year, and that will continue this year. Um, as you saw, uh, just a second ago in, in Dr. Adams' updates, uh, East's performance was lower than its peers. So this practice of analyzing, identifying the, uh, areas of, of growth that are necessary will continue into not only this year's, um, portion of the school improvement plan action steps, but obviously any school sort of doing that type of analysis on a yearly basis. Goal three, um, was focused on safe and inclusive environments within our school. Last year, we had the opportunity with adding the guidance counselors to, um, the team of guidance that included the school psychologists and adjustment counselors. Uh, we had an opportunity district-wide and, and school-wide to figure out what we are going to do with, with the team that we had and how we wanted to deploy them. Um, and so this sort of chart helped us understand that we had some daily needs and some as-needed needs, and then also just some overarching needs. Uh, we worked with, with Heather last year, uh, to talk about areas that, that our, our team members could show up in, um, and find ways for them to support kids within their relative areas. We also helped develop our staff's awareness of how to utilize the people that they have within the guidance team. Um, because it was new, not everyone was really up to speed on like how and who they were supposed to be calling for support in specific areas. So we spent a good amount of time over the, over the, the year, um, not only taking specific case studies and providing that information to our team in our faculty meetings or within our, our working groups, but also just to provide that information to parents. It's helpful as a parent to know, uh, situation-specific, which of our team members might be best able to, to help you out. We also utilize morning meetings school-wide. Um, I, I feel that East Elementary does a real strong job with their social-emotional learning. Not only do our, our, our classroom environments, uh, start every single day with morning meeting and a positive opportunity to check in with one another, but our educators are really invested in the emotional health of our students. Uh, when conflicts arise, um, oftentimes that is of the highest priority, just as much of a priority as liter-, literacy or mathematics, sort of pausing what we're doing and understanding that if we can't address either peer conflicts or, um, the social-emotional well-being of our classroom, that our students are not in a good place to learn. Um, so helping them, uh, with the, with the, uh, monthly toolbox focus areas was something that our adjustment counselor and our guidance counselor really focused on last year. So we provide with each month the opportunity to use toolbox tools through slides and content that's not only provided to educators, but our adjustment counselor and/or guidance counselor will go into classrooms or grade levels, meet with them, discuss the tools, talk about practical applications for this type of work, where and how they can use it from a real age-appropriate lens, and we also bring it into our monthly all-school meetings. So the students have an opportunity to hear exemplars of, of students using particularly like their breathing tool this month and shouting those kids out, um, but also to hear from our guidance staff, having them sort of be forward-facing and owning a lot of this work, uh, has been a, a really great contribution to the East community. Also providing some parent information about the social-emotional screeners, helping them answer questions and understand, uh, when we have those screener results, what does that mean? When your student is going to begin, if they've been identified through the screening process, if we're suggesting that they're working with a guidance counselor or adjustment counselor. Parents really want to know not only what is that for? How long are we going to be doing that work? What type of work is happening in those sessions? So our guidance counselor and adjustment counselor helped families, uh, understand each of the sort of facets of their work. We also provided for, uh, families, uh, last March at the middle school, each of the elementary schools, um, represented, um, at a night that was hosted also by Caitlin McGillicuddy and Tom Ford, the school resource officers, to talk about safety in schools. Everything from online safety, um, and actual physical safety in schools, what types of sort of, uh, emergency response protocols are our students responsible for understanding, but also truly the internet, cyber-safety, understanding the connections that either a conflict has in school that bleeds out into the online space through messaging, through, um, connections outside of school. What recourse the school has in those instances, how to help your students navigate that, what support the school can provide you in those instances. Uh, we thought that was really, again, another well-received sort of community-focused, uh, piece. Our last goal is focused around diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is another sort of monthly theme that has a lot of different connections to the different spaces in East Elementary. So aside from identifying work that we chose to do within our equity teams each month, um, we also found ways to bring that into our classrooms, into our whole school, through all-school meetings. One small example of that is providing our educators with some content that is DEI-focused, particularly in either named and themed months, like the month of May being AAPI, um, Asian-American Pacific Islander awareness, um, but also providing truly content that was, uh, intended to promote exposure to that month and why it's celebrated, the heritage that's celebrated within that month, uh, in an age-appropriate way. So that is slides and videos and images and web quests that our students can take. Sometimes they are done in a standalone morning meeting or an extension, and sometimes those are done within social studies or reading classes. Um, but we chose, uh, in our equity teams to, to focus on that type of work um, because it was direct feedback from our parent community and from our educators, that they wanted sort of more, they didn't want to just name it and celebrate it, that they really wanted to like kind of interact with it, uh, and so we had a lot of success, uh, with that initiative. We also engaged Amy Jackson as our Metco director to work with, uh, not only our educators through our, uh, monthly equity teams, but also in faculty meetings, to talk about, uh, what type of resources she can provide, the, the challenges that some of our Metco students face, um, and also extending that out into the PTO sphere, where Amy was graciously helping us understand the need for developing host families within East Elementary for our, our Metco students. Um, and already some of those actions, uh, that took a little bit to sort of get up and running at the end of the, uh, over the course of last year, uh, are in place now. Uh, I'm thinking of one student in particular who is a, a Metco student of ours, but has gotten involved in Hingham football, and we were able to help connect, uh, them with a, a host family so that on Fridays, instead of going home, they're able to interact and stay, uh, not only get to their practice and games, but, um, obviously becoming sort of a part of that sort of families Friday night and like weekend functions. It's really great connection. The last piece, um, that I wanted to make sure I connect for our, our diversity, equity, inclusion focus was just the work that our, our Library and Media Center Specialist Beth Thorstensen has done to build out not only what we call the East Roving Family Library, but also the physical library itself. We have a, a cart of, of books that are DEI-focused, books that are representative of the cultures within our school, but also, uh, representative of those monthly themes that are celebrated. In addition to that roving cart that educators can use when they're doing DEI-focused lessons or just for exposure in their classrooms or content connections, the physical library at East as well, uh, has benefited from, from her work. Uh, some of that is, is budgeted and some of it was, was grant-funded. Uh, but, uh, the shelves in, in our library, again, are, are really well-representative of the many cultures around the world, but also specifically the cultures that are represented at East Elementary. Thank you, guys. It's a lot to sort of spit out. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Or Carrie's suggestion tonight.
Sure.
That you always remind me of the acronyms in the documents.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
I'm just when, um, uh, for parent-friendliness, sometimes it's some easier to, I think it's like T, the TMI and the.
DRI.
T, EGR, I, to.
Spell them out.
Spell them out for, for one parent, it's a suggestion, and I learned that from Carrie.
That's definitely helpful, we'll do that.
But thank, but thank you also.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm so excited to hear that there's a host family for the student who's doing the Hingham Youth Football. I've been an advocate for there for a long time, so I'm happy that's happening now.
Yeah, it's really cool. It's become, uh, not only, you know, wonderful connection, but, you know, right around 2:00 on, on Fridays, you can see that student like really getting excited. Like, they're not going home, matter of fact, they brought their football gear in last Friday to, uh, make sure that they could sort of show it off to their class, dissuading him from, from wearing their helmet outside of recess. Uh, but it is, it's, it's brought a lot of light, it's, it's really great.
Yeah, it's wonderful, thank you. All right, somebody want to make a motion?
Yes, I just want to think about what they might, because this is a planned progress update, right? Because we've already accepted.
Last year was year one, so this, we're into year two already.
All right, so.
So I'm trying to think back, back 10 minutes. For when we made the original motion.
Figure out if we need to.
I don't, just because it's the same.
It's the same, we already approved a plan.
Yeah.
Last year.
You should approve, this is moving forward. Yeah, the update in moving into year two.
All right, good. Year two. All right, so I will make a motion to approve the, um, school improvement, East Elementary School Improvement Plan progress update and renew our approval of the current plan moving into year two.
I'll second. Sorry, I was writing that down.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you for joining. Okay, um, 7.2, to discuss an overnight student trip in January 2024 to the Harvard Model UN Conference in Boston and act as appropriate. Um, I'm not sure if you're taking this on, Dr. Adams, or?
Catherine M. Black is here.
Okay.
She's on.
Oh, got it, okay. Sorry.
Yes, hello, hello, I, I hope I can be heard, it's intimidating not knowing what my voice is doing in that room.
You're good.
Yeah, you sound great.
I, um, I can be very brief, the logistics of the trip are basically identical as they were last year. I will be bringing 25 students, along with him per colleague, to the Sheraton, Boston, from January 26th to the 28th. And, uh, just a quick, um, confirmation that last year's trip was a success. All the students who did not graduate and went last year, but have to go again this year, so that's great news. And the club itself has at least tripled in size, some word has gotten out that this is a really great experience. So, uh, we, we very much look forward to it, and I can certainly answer any questions that anyone asks.
Do you have any questions? No?
No.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Catherine. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the overnight student trip, um, to, for the model, Harvard Model UN trip to Boston in January 2024.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Catherine.
Thank you very much.
That's great, enjoy. Um, all right, 7.3, to discuss an out-of-state, one-day competition for the Hingham High School rowing team and act as appropriate, we've got Jim Patrimony here, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. So this is a new trip for us, a very competitive trip for our, our boys and girls crew teams. Um, but it is a typical setup for a, for a regatta, um, in terms of the travel and the, the coaching staff onboard for the trip. We will be heading to, to New Hampshire, Pembroke, New Hampshire.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? So how does everything get there? I'm assuming buses and.
Yes.
But, yeah, but how do you get the boats there and just everything is being trailered or?
The HHSRA, we're very fortunate to have them onboard, uh, helping us run this program, and parent volunteers will take the trailers up.
Great, okay. Great.
It's quite a, it's quite a production.
I bet. And if my memory serves, they will be having food for, and, um, waters and whatnot for the kids and spectators from 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM, it's.
Amazing.
They do a lot, yeah.
We did this last year, it's, it's a long day, but.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
Amazing, that's a trip of 90 students that doesn't have a cost for the students, so with the costs is covered by the HHSRA, so. Love that.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
Ready.
Um, all right, I will make a motion to approve the, um, Hingham High Rowing Team overnight, well, overnight 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM trip to Pembroke, New Hampshire, um, on October 15th, 2023.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yeah.
All right, 7.4, to receive an update on YRBS and Wellness Committee. Dr. Adams?
We have a, a team here to help us, um, do this tonight. Um, this is, um, a summary of some of the data from the Youth, Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and we also combined, um, at the end, um, and included, um, an update on the Wellness Committee from last year and can give you a sense of, um, where the group is headed this year as well, um, using some of this data and hoping to set some goals, um, for the coming school year that continue to support the social-emotional learning needs, um, of our students, so.
This evening, I'll be filling in for Karen Beatty, um, our Health Department Coordinator, who usually presents, so she couldn't join us this evening, but wanted to thank Karen for her work in, um, preparing this evening's slides and for administering, uh, administering the YRBS. So, uh, to Carrie's earlier point, we swim in the sea of acronyms, and so we have one more to add this evening, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Um, it's designed by the CDC, Center for Disease Control, and it is used by both the CDC and by DUCY um, for, uh, to get a representative sample and snapshot of student health. Here in the district, we use our own version of the YRBS in order to track longitudinal trends. Um, it's something that we admin. It's something that we administer every spring to students in grades seven, nine, and 11. The last full survey that we completed was in 2019. We paused during COVID and we are eager to get back to collecting this important data, which informs our programming. And so the survey is not, where it is anonymous, it is not used to help individual students. We'll talk a bit later about the SDQ, the Strengths and Difficulties Questionnaire. That is not anonymous. That is used as kind of an early warning system for us to actually identify individual students. But this is anonymous, again, used for the purpose of longitudinal trends. And it's instrumental in shaping our health curriculum, our physical education curriculum, our counseling curriculum. And also informs a variety of programming. And so we'll share some of the various aspects of our program that this data informs. And it also is helpful when we're applying for grants that we have some data to pull from. If we're looking to apply for grants that have an SEL focus or a health focus. And again, giving us the chance to not only track things longitudinally, but also compare Hingham data to state and national trends. And so given that there are nearly 100 questions on the grade nine and 11 survey and 70 questions on the seventh grade survey, each of which could become an action step. Karen curated a few focus areas that she has been tracking over time. So again, with 100 questions on the high school survey, 70 on the middle school. This is not a comprehensive presentation this evening. She curated some of the highlights of the data. But anyone interested in seeing the full YRBS survey that is publicly available on the Health Department website. And so we could take a deeper dive into that. And so, if you could queue that up, sorry, thank you. And so a few of the areas that Karen, in particular in her health curriculum are focused on are some areas around drug and alcohol use, around mental health. And so I'll highlight a few of these areas that she's pulled out for us. So one trend that she has been tracking closely over time is student behavior when it comes to smoking and vaping. We'll talk a bit about some concerns particularly around vaping that we continue to have. If you take a look at the next slide, both smoking and vaping are actually trending down for us, which is a positive, but still too high. And so Rick and Derek, when they join us later, we'll talk about some of the action steps that we're taking with regards to substance abuse. Another area of concern and one that we have been tracking over the past many years relates to alcohol consumption. You'll see, as we would imagine, there is an uptick from grade seven, nine to 11 in the alcohol consumption.
Was that? Sorry. Is that a different slide? That's a party slide.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry. I was looking at a different slide here. Thank you. So attending parties in the past three months with alcohol. This is an area that again, Rick and Derek will communicate during their presentation. An area that we're really eager to partner with families on. So this data point is giving us some insight into where students are consuming alcohol. Some of them are consuming it in homes with parents present, which is one area of concern. Also, an area of concern is when they are consuming alcohol in homes where parents are not present. So both statistics are concerning and one area in which we hope to partner with families through some communication strategies that Rick and Derek will share. We also hope to partner with families regarding to how students are accessing alcohol. And so really looking at the source as well as the level of supervision related to that. Also, following trends around marijuana use. You can see that uptick as we would anticipate from grade seven to 11. But concern in particular that used in the last 30 days for our 11th graders is a dead point of concern. So again, though there is a downward trend, it's still something that we are very much focusing on. So again, some positive signs in that vaping, both ever vaped and recently vaped, has gone down since 2019. But really alcohol remains a concern. Both recent drinking and binge drinking. And really again partnering with the community around that data. With drinking at parties, both with adults present or in homes that are left unsupervised. And though we are seeing some positive trends with regard to overall consumption of marijuana and alcohol, still something of concern. This next section is something that Heather will be also echoing in her piece at the end of the presentation around the wellness report. So again, the YRBS data is one of many data points that we collect around student wellness and mental health. And so this data here around students feeling sad or hopeless is something that we are also kind of tracking data in other ways. And most concerned with that number that it increases over time, even though our numbers overall for ninth and 11th are a bit lower than they were in 2019. Another concerning data point around students having committed, considering committed suicide in the past 12 months, 12% in ninth grade and 9% in 11th grade. Comparing that to the state data of 17% for grades nine and 11. This slide here actually relates to a presentation we had today by Jessica Minahan around anxiety. Really getting at students worry about things ranging from homework to change in their day to talking to a teacher. Students who answered often or always are in the kind of high 40s range. This slide here also getting at anxiety avoidance, whether that's school avoidance or going places outside the home. We are seeing again some uptick in data of 2003 relative to 2019, particularly for our grade nine population. This slide here gets at one of the most protective factors for all of the other mental health concerns, and that is sleep. And so the CDC recommends eight to 10 hours of sleep per night for students in that 13 to 18 range. And our students simply are not getting that recommended eight to 10 hours. And this slide here again gets, in addition to sleep, some of the other protective factors when it comes to mental health. Really a data point to be proud of is the fact that 80% or more of our high school students are participating in at least one sport. So again, that's a protective factor. Also looking at beyond athletics, participation in all of the other clubs and intramurals. The sheer range of offerings, we hope that means that there is something for everyone that through having that range of offerings, that we are capturing the interests of all students. So they can find a home where they feel comfortable and their interests are represented. So over 25 options at the middle school, 75 at the high school. And then again, beyond athletics, students are involved in not only activities at the school, but also beyond the school day, in the community, taking private lessons, involved in their church and other community organizations. And then volunteer work is an interesting data point for us to track as well. That too is very strongly correlated with strong mental health. So volunteering, kind of, kind of thinking outside your own, your own self is in fact a protective factor from a social emotional standpoint. So an interesting data point to look at. This question here is something that Heather again will get at more in her portion of the presentation. But we've talked a lot about this idea of a sense of belonging. Some of that again is supported by some of the data that we just mentioned around involvement. Students who are involved tend to also have that sense of belonging. And so over 60% of students sense that they, report a sense of belonging. But we do have some work to do there. And 85% of grade seven students and 80% of students in grade nine and 11 reported that they never only occasionally feel lonely, but obviously some additional students for us to target. This data here is promising in that another protective factor for students is having an adult to whom they feel connected, whether that be a family member, a teacher, or a community member. And so more than 90% of our students have at least one adult, whether inside or outside of the home. And whether that be a teacher, coach, community organizer, and so on, that they feel that they are connected with. And so again, just some overall impressions of that mental health data. And I do, I'm grateful to Karen for preparing these slides. So we do have an increase since 2019, again echoed today in our presentation that we had by behavior analyst Jessica Minahan around some of the changes that we've seen since COVID. So an increase in grade seven, nine, and 11 around that anxiety and worry. Grades 11 students showing slightly reduced rates of feeling sad and hopeless, while grades nine and seven are similar or higher to the 2019 data. A positive, although an area that we are always working on is the rates of feeling sad, hopeless, or having suicide ideation in Hingham is much lower than the Massachusetts state data. Can't stress enough, looking at you, Alex Doggett, sleep is one of the most protective factors. So we are keeping you up past your bedtime, so we want to keep this meeting short this evening. So our students are getting sleep. And so that is something we will continue to message to students. We are grateful that students do feel connected and have an adult to talk to. And the schools and community offer many opportunities for students to feel connected, get involved, and have their interests represented in our programming. And so I did promise one last acronym to round out the evening. So as I mentioned at the beginning, the YRBS is used to track longitudinal trends and inform our programming. But we do in addition administer another tool called the SDQ, the Strengths and Difficulties Questionnaire. And that is what we use to target students who may be experiencing social emotional distress. It's a 25 question survey that helps us to capture students who may be struggling. And we use this to match students with the resources that they need. And that I believe concludes my portion of the presentation. And so we have on deck tonight Derek Smith to report on some of the interventions that we have at the middle school level in order to support student wellness. Rick will share the supports that we have at the high school. And then Heather will round out the evening with some updates from the Wellness Committee.
All right, thanks very much, Katie. And thanks very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening on this topic. It's something that is very important to me personally. Because I do believe that we, no matter how great our teachers are, kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And that's our first line of defense. In every school and every classroom in this town, we put adults who care deeply about the kids that they work with. And we put that in place and that allows us to do the important work in all other areas. So I'm going to talk to you about the things that the middle school does to support our students, the prevention efforts that we have in place to, to address social and emotional needs for our students. We have three tiers of support at the middle school as we do in all schools. Tier one, which is for all students. We provide second step lessons. This is our second year of, I'll say reimplementation. It was a program that we had in place years ago. We had paused it for a while and brought it back last year with a series of lessons that were taught by school counselors, adjustment counselors, administrators, and select teachers. We're expanding that program this year, which I can speak more about in a bit. We run a recognition program weekly for students highlighting positive behavior, our Act of Honor Program. Where any teacher, any adult in the school, or sometimes even other students can recognize a student's positive behavior. And they are recognized weekly with a certificate, you know, highlighting whatever it was that they had done. A small token of our appreciation. We have quarterly assemblies to focus on various social emotional topics and to support students in their growth as both learners, but as citizens within our, our community. Our Dare Program for sixth graders, they participate in that for a semester in sixth grade, which obviously looks at drug and alcohol use and prevention methods. But also builds a strong connection with the Hingham Police Department through Officer Ramsey. So that positive relationship that is, is formed there and carries through young adulthood for many of our kids who, who feel very connected to Officer Ramsey, office forward, all of our school resource officers. In seventh and eighth grade, all students participate in our health class for a quarter of the year. We have had in place for many years our One Book One School Program. We have focused on fostering a sense of belonging for all of our students over the past few years with our selection of, of literature. And this year we're, we're connecting that program with our work with the Anti-Defamation League and our No Place For Hate efforts for all students in our school. Faculty and administrators have already begun our work there. And we're going to extend that work to the student population over the course of the year. In particular, our kickoff event for One Book One School, or our culminating event, I should say. We kicked it off last spring. We'll be bringing it all together this fall with a speaker for all students, a Holocaust survivor, which is going to be a very powerful event for our students and faculty. And every day we start our day with Calm Classroom. And my calming voice comes over the loudspeaker. And we talk to kids about mindfulness and we take less than two minutes for them to center themselves at the start of the day. And then, you know, we do find that that helps many of our students. And hopefully it's a tool that they bring with them beyond the morning announcements and, and can internalize and draw upon when they need it. But that's for all students. Our tier two interventions and supports, and that's for, you know, a population of students who we believe have some risk, about 15%. Students that we have identified in that group, they have the opportunity as needed to have lunch groups with their guidance counselor or school counselors, as we call them at the middle school, where they can work on areas of need, usually in a social domain. But if they're struggling academically, you know, they try to put kids together in groups that have similar challenges. And they can work together on strategies to, to confront those challenges on their own and build the capacity within our kids to do those things, fading adult support over the three years that we have them. And we do check in, check out with identified students. For anyone unfamiliar, it's, it's just what it sounds like. If we know that a student is coming to us with some sort of challenge, we set up a system where they can start their day or even each block with a quick interaction with an adult. How are you? Are you ready to learn? Do you need some time? You, it, it makes that connection with a student. It, it gives us a regular routine where the students can predict how they're going to be in each day or each period. And allows us to kind of gauge where they're at each day. For our tier three students, about 5% of our kids, the kids who are at risk, some of the more formalized programs that we have in place, our Transition Room, which has been in place for some time now. Students who require a place within the school where they are stepping away from maybe the rigor of the classroom environment, but they still are getting the academic support that they need. That's in place for students who we identify through a series of. who we identify through a series of, I won't say screeners, but working with our counseling staff and teachers and parents, students who we have identified as needing that support can access the Transition Room throughout the day with a plan in place that moves them from Transition Room back into the classroom over time. The goal is to transition, not to stay in the room. And we have small lunch groups for students who might have counseling services identified in their IEP or for plan. Those groups would meet with a school adjustment counselor. Some of the systems of support that we have, we use a universal screener, as Katie mentioned earlier, our Strengths and Difficulty Questionnaire. We plan to administer that in October and in April. We use that data to find students who are demonstrating an elevated need in the domains that were pointed out earlier. The emotional, the conduct, hyperactivity, peer relations. If we see groups of students who have a similar need, we can put those students together and work on interventions for the kids, whether it be a group or things like a check-in, check-out system, or working with families to have the students more successfully access the services available here at school. We're going to analyze that data with the school counseling staff and help to put the matching interventions to student needs. We share the data and support students through meetings with our academic teams throughout the year on a regular basis. Administrators and counselors will meet with the teams to talk about what we've seen through these screeners, and also just to share any information that we have that teachers need in order to best support the students in the classroom, also to connect them with the tier two and tier three supports that we have in place. And we have an instructional support team that meets regularly throughout the year. And while that is traditionally focused on academic needs, now using the SDQ, we have another data point to bring into those meetings, so we can say that yes, it's no wonder that they're having difficulty completing work on time, because we see through the SDQ that they have an elevated area of need, say, you know, with the, in their social emotional realms. Some of the things that we plan to continue with, Sherri, if we can move to the next slide, please. Implementing a check-in and check-out system in a more widely throughout our school. You know, we connect the procedures identified by the SDQ and make sure that all faculty members are on board with that. And it's not just a small group of people who are implementing those check-in, check-outs that we have trained our staff and how to make use of those on a daily basis in a variety of settings. We're going to share the SDQ results with the academic teams identifying students needing additional support. Here's one of the things that I think is most important. It's sharing the youth risk behavior survey data, not just with the faculty, but our school council, our PTO, and caregivers, because as Katie mentioned before, some of these behaviors are taking place outside of the school. And if we have that information and we're not sharing that with the families, we can't affect any sort of change that we believe would be in the student's best interest. So having this data is great, sharing it is very important, beyond what we're doing this evening. We are expanding our data meetings to include the analysis of the social emotional learning data, in addition to the math and literacy data meetings that we have in place. As I mentioned before, we're partnering with ADL and No Place For Hate to create a more inclusive community. And I referred to this earlier, we're starting our second step lessons this week. So each month during our early release day, we will have a team of administrators and counselors and select classroom teachers providing a second step lesson, and then beyond that, the content area teachers will do a follow-up lesson. So we are moving the work of caring for students' social emotional needs beyond just the counseling staff and the administrators, but really sending home the message to our community that this is everybody's work, and we are all committed to making sure our students are in the best social emotional space when they come to school, because we can't really expect them to perform and be successful academically if they don't come to school ready to learn. So that is what we're doing at the middle school, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Swanson to talk a little bit about what's going on at the high school.
Thank you Derek. And good evening, everybody. Honored to join Derek and the rest of the team in this important work, and really just want to emphasize the extent to which I agree with your opening statement about how central all of this is to the mission of our school. And the achievement data that we look at, and whether it's earlier tonight looking at MCAS data, or MCAS scores, or any other achievement data, it can only have meaning, and good meaning, in the context of a community that's healthy and strong, and a community that feels connected. And that's what these efforts are really about. They're foundational to the work of our school. So apologize for the small font here. We tried to squeeze a lot in to try to give you a sense of the breadth of tier one supports that are available to all students at Hingham High School, and some of the ways in which we try to monitor as best we can the social emotional health of our school. Starting with a topic that's been mentioned already, the SDQ that in the past had been administered annually. This year, we intend to administer it twice during the course of the year and going forward, essentially doubling our opportunities to become alert to any developing problems that may be happening in the life of any of our students. Among the supports, our ninth grade advisory program that meets once or twice every month throughout ninth grade with all of our students. It works in conjunction with a peer mentoring program that's been in existence for three or four years now. And that, those two programs together match all of our incoming high school students, both with a faculty advisor to meet in small groups, and with some upper-class mentors who would operate essentially as a big brother, big sister type of program to help ease the transition into the high school. Among the many clubs that are offered at the high school, one in particular deserves some special attention in this presentation, and that's our Breathe Out Club. It's advised by both of our adjustment counselors, Kevin Lally and Jessica Hoagay, with the explicit mission to promote stress reduction and mental health. Those students are trained to deliver peer presentations and phys ed classes to students in ninth grade, delivering stress reduction strategies. They also plan a number of events throughout the year, including a popular event called Breathe Out Days. The first one of this year will be happening a week from Friday, and it's an opportunity for that club to try to promote good, healthy strategies for reducing stress. Our peer tutoring programs, in a sense, offer social emotional support in terms of stress reduction in the process of providing academic support. Our health classes, which are required, it's a graduation requirement, and as you probably know, all 10th grade students will complete an entire semester of a health class that meets every day. It's got a curriculum that's very strong and has a particular focus on mental health. The longest unit in the course is a mental health unit. All sophomores who take the course spend about a month dealing directly with mental health issues, and then getting into other health issues, including some of the substance topics that we're looking at tonight as well. I would argue that our school looks for as many ways as possible to promote the right values and to promote mental health, both the Catching Kindness Awards, the Andrew Rohfdeh Catching Kindness Awards that are given out twice a year, and the Aubrey Awards that are given out every month, seek to promote those values and honor them in new ways. Whole school and grade level assemblies that are held frequently, among them the annual Hingham Cares Day that we'll have this year for the third time. That's one good example of the community partnerships that we've strived to really cultivate and strengthen. Hingham Cares has been a great partner here. Their presentation is dealing primarily with substance issues, but also with mental health. This year in March, we'll do that again, and each of the four grade levels at the high school will have their own grade level assembly on that day. Breathe Out Days, I mentioned, no homework weekends, of course, also contributing to stress reduction. The first one of those is coming up in a couple of weeks, too. It coincides with homecoming on October 21st and 22nd. Counseling seminars at all grade levels, and of course, the most loved and famous creature in the town of Hingham, Aubrey, comfort dog, who greets students every morning on their way in, probably sees them at lunch in the hallways and on their way back out in the afternoon, and who knows where else. Is ubiquitous in our school, and not only our school, but really in the other schools as well, has proven especially helpful in the past week at both South Elementary and East Elementary, coming to the rescue on a couple of occasions, as she does for us on pretty much a daily basis. The tier two supports for students who need additional support beyond the broad supports that are available to everyone, the opportunity to check in and out with guidance counselors, the opportunity, if necessary, to engage in a directed study program that has grown substantially over the past few years. It's a small group in-school support for students who may not qualify for special ed services, but need some additional support in a small group. We've been happy with the growth and expansion of that program as well. Students typically come into the directed study program as the result of the IST process, instructional support team that meets once a cycle. So basically, every seven school days, a team of teachers chaired by the assistant principals and with counselors and academic teachers as well, to look for additional ways to try to provide support for students who are struggling, and students are recommended to that group by their teachers, or potentially by counselors or administrators as well. Tier three supports for students who are most at risk, this would include the Transition Room program that has been in existence for well over a decade and is housed within our counseling office. Small group and social skills groups to the extent possible within the constraints of our schedule, and facilitated by our adjustment counselors. And finally, the Supported Learning Center, which is one of our special ed programs, run very ably by Lynn Kopp, and this is one of our, again, very effective tier three support. So among those support efforts, we mentioned the SDQ, that's point number one, analysis of data that comes from the SDQ, rather, with counselors and administrators in order to try to identify the students who are most in need of that support. We're looking for ways to share trends from that data, the SDQ data, and then, again, as I mentioned, the IST that meets once a cycle, so basically four, probably four times a month. Among ways with an eye toward continual improvement, while I find a lot of the data from the YRBS and another report that we'll look at soon, the Wellness Report, in many respects, the numbers are scary. We see we have a lot to be concerned about. We also see some encouraging trends in a lot of areas as well. I would also just amplify the constant effort to improve regardless, even in areas where we feel like the trend is positive. You know, we see vaping going down, we see the numbers with alcohol relatively constant, but we would never be satisfied, even if we feel like the trend is in the right direction. How can we accelerate the trend? What more can we be doing? So in brainstorming recently, as we analyze that data, here are a few of the things that we came up with. Bless you. First of all, as I mentioned before, doubling the amount of screening that we do with the SDQ, so that we do it twice a year once in the fall, as well as later in the year. Identifying some new strategies for sharing the data that we have. It's really valuable data, and as long as I can remember, we have shared the data publicly. We've always posted this data on the website, and we've encouraged people to take a look at it. But we're also recognizing realistically, how many people probably do go to the website and read the data in the YRBS report? It's probably not that many people, even if we encourage them to do it. So we've talked about additional ways to get those numbers out there in a way that's digestible. If you happen to be a reader of the Hingham Highway, the weekly newsletter, you might have noticed that two weeks ago, we launched a new strategy for trying to get those numbers out there. It's a did you know feature that will highlight one single piece of data from the YRBS report. It's designed in a way to be graphically appealing and to visually catch people's attention with the help of a very talented graphic artist, Mr. Esho, our high school graphic arts teacher who's designed the graphics. And we'll continue to kind of vary them week to week to make them more creative and eye-catching and get the data out there. The first one we put out there was data about how frequently students admit to texting while driving. That was a bit of a scary number. That was the first week. The second week, we highlighted some of the information about sleep that was also concerning. We'll continue to look for relevant pieces of data to share on a weekly basis. We also want to do more to share it with partners like the PTO, more to analyze the data with school council, although we have been doing that for years, and the school council also has contributed questions from year to year. As a matter of fact, the data on the question about sense of belonging this year is a question that was recommended by our school council because of its connection to one of our school goals. So as Katie mentioned, our version of the YRBS is mostly the same as the statewide and national survey item, but we also have the opportunity to add some questions, and that's one that we added. The school council will continue to look for ways to contribute here and to help us develop new programming and brainstorm new things, like what else can we be doing? We hope to do the same with teachers. We intend this year to expand our tier one programming. Just yesterday, we signed on a new speaker that we're excited about to come in in January, dealing with the topic of teen resiliency, and that will be for the entire school. We were also recognizing a particular need to be sure that we're not feeling like the job is done after sophomore year, when our ninth graders have spent a lot of time in ninth grade advisory, our sophomores had a really robust health experience. What more can we be doing to continue a consistent delivery of programming to juniors and seniors? Part of that will be expanding assemblies and bringing in more guest speakers. Trying to enlist our clubs, several of which are really aimed at these issues, SAD, which this year is advised by Erica Shinney, our PE teacher, and they've got some creative new ideas for trying to grow that club, bring on more members, and there are a variety of other clubs that can join us in this effort as well. Expanding outdoor learning opportunities is something else we'd like to look at this year, looking at connections between being outdoors and mental health, and then continuing to look for ways, whether it's the newsletter, the website, other social media, to enhance the promotion of the supports that we offer. We really do feel like Hingham High School offers a strong level of support, but it may not always be the case that students and parents are fully aware of all the supports that are available. So looking for ways to be sure through constant promotion that everybody knows the supports that are available to them, so they can more fully take advantage of them. And I think, I think I'm done. Is that, that's it for my slides? I'm going to turn it over to Heather Robbery.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. So I will be talking about the Wellness Committee. So I am a brand new member this year of the Wellness Committee, and some of the work that had begun last year started under our previous Director of Student Services, and one of the questions, or two of the questions that they wanted to ask were just to get a snapshot, we hear that students are stressed and overwhelmed and anxious, and so, you know, can we non-intrusively just get a broad feeling for where that comes from and why that might be? And so there was a two-question survey that went out to high school students, and it was, the first question is, do you feel like you had the appropriate amount of social, emotional, and academic balance in your day? And we're finding that a lot of kids feel that they don't have a lot of balance and need some support in doing that. And then the extended question was, how do you think you could get more balance in your day? So we got some really great insights from the students themselves, because we really want to listen to student voice, and we as adults have some great ideas, but the students kind of live it every day, and they know what is good for them as well. So they, homework is always a popular topic. It stresses them out, which is a little bit necessary, but we want to explore how can we make it more effective, make sure we're doing the correct volume, and extending learning in the home environment in a way that contributes to learning during the day. More mental and social break time, so we heard a lot that during COVID, one of the positive things about that time was the mask break for ten minutes at the high school. They got to go outside, get some fresh air, connect with peers for more than just a hey, how you doing, I got to get to my next class in the hallways. So a little bit of time in the middle of the day where there's not much going on, and then just adults to be clued into the amount of stress that they have and kind of, if they can't do much about it, acknowledging it. And I think that goes back to social emotional learning and awareness. It's not just counselors who need to understand how everybody functions, but it's bringing that for teachers, acknowledging, I know you had a lot of homework in other classes, I know things may be going on in your family, want to make sure you guys are all okay. Okay, now let's get into learning, so that they're acknowledging social emotional health. And the vast majority of our teachers are doing that every single day, every single period of every single day. So I think we're good there, but just being a little bit more explicit as much as we can to make the students as we can um to make the students um explicitly understand that that's what we're doing when we're asking, how are you? Um, it's not just a little small talk. It's actually caring about those, their social emotional health. So those are some things that they had suggested that we work on a little bit at the high school level. And the next steps for the wellness committee, we are in our second year. We have a, an expanded group now, so we're gonna dig into the work a little bit more. Um, so we're gonna continue to strengthen the tiered systems of support, not only for academics, but social emotional learning as well. Um, we have been having small pockets of teachers and we have a professional learning community, reading the book, grading for equity and kind of diving into that and exploring what um teachers can do in terms of that in the classroom and kind of spreading that from a smaller group to a larger group of teachers. Um, we at the high school are working with the S three academy. Um, it's an effort from the Department of Education to really start identifying strengths and um kind of at risk qualities for a broader range of students. And so connecting those students with interventions and passing along that information from year to year so that we really get to know our students really quickly instead of having to spend some time at the beginning of every single year figuring them out. We can pass that information along as they go. Um, and then we're gonna be sharing the wellness committee report out a little more widely and um do a little bit more surveying because two questions are great. It's a starting point, but two questions don't give us everything that we need to do in the scope of our work. So we'll continue to refine what do we need to know and what can we do about it? Um, so that is, that's what we're doing for the wellness committee. All right. And then we just have some helpful resources in terms of the health website um has a lot of information. We also have um the social emotional resources page on the district website as well is always being updated and expanded. And then I think we have a slide next with some helpful links and want to take some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra, have you any questions?
It's not one that really has an answer, but just kind of like, why is homework the third rail that we can't do anything about? Like, seems like overnight of like, we've heard over and over again, the kids are stressed out by homework. Mental health professor, professionals say the kids should have less homework. Even academe, we haven't heard it tonight, but academics are off, these studies are often questioning the effectiveness of homework. Why do we give so much homework? I mean, it seems like an easy, I don't know, like, why is homework the third rail in Hingham?
One of the challenges with the surveys, it didn't allow us to look at particular grade levels or groups. So as a very, as you can see in the committee report, it asked two questions. Um, and so it didn't allow us to dig deeper. I do think if you ask high school kids if they get too much homework, they're likely to say yes, um, because they're high schoolers. Um, I just watched my own high schooler do homework and she may spend three hours at it, but half of that is um being distracted um by her device, by someone texting her, by doing something else so that if she actually did sit and do it, um, she would have only had about an hour, an hour and a half. So I think that we need to probe a little deeper. Um, I think that as you heard today, our intent is to share the information um and dig um deeper into the data with multiple groups and get more insight um into the information so we can make a better um judgment and and just discussion around what's going on, including involving the faculty that, you know, that was just a student survey involving the faculty at the high school, directors and looking at homework um at the high school to determine um what's the case. And talking to the students as well. So I think we have some work to do specifically with that wellness. I think it was a very narrow survey and just didn't allow us to to really dig into further the, some of the whys about what's happening with students, so.
Carrie?
So um, I noticed that you have the community partnership at the high school of Hingham Cares and I was wondering if we considered doing, expanding that to the middle school. Um, I I know there are some things that sort of address substance abuse that like um the DARE program, I know they do and um probably some of the, I'm thinking some of the um the second step would address that somewhat, but um just to expand it to get the community more involved, um, because I think we, we're talking about part wanting to partner with parents, but I think it's it's sort of a cultural issue as far as the um, you know, the drinking and and in Hingham. So I just wondered if you had considered that.
It's not something that we had explored previously, but I'm certainly open to partnering with a group like Hingham Cares. Uh, I think they've got a lot of valuable resources that we can take advantage of. Um, and I'd love to learn more about what they would have, um, if not for our students, but for our parents, um, you know, because they may not have any sort of programming appropriate for 11 to 14 year olds, but um maybe a uh uh some parent ed resources might be a good, a good way to go, but I'd love to learn more about how I can work with.
I vaguely remember them being a, having a table. I remember walking into the middle school, I've been a parents night or a, or a presentation. And I remember they had a table there and they were spreading some information. This is a long, a long time ago, probably.
Yeah, pre-COVID, right.
We have a member now on the wellness committee representing him in Hingham Cares, so we're looking forward to partnering with them. Yeah, um, and including them in the discussions. Um, at the townwide PTO, I shared the YRBS data with them and we had a good discussion. They're also interested in, um, it was mostly elementary folks, um, but Derek and Rick are gonna have the discussion with their own PTOs as well to see how we can enlist and start just, I think this is converse, one conversation after another that we have to continually have both with our families, our young people, um, and include staff as well and sort of the discussion about some of the that data, so.
Yeah, getting the elementary parents is a great idea because they, you know, just get them early and and hooked into this, so.
We had a rich discussion around social media and the impact of social media on especially some of the social emotional um concerns of students, so.
The impact of that on sleep.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Truly.
Anyone else?
Data's amazing. Thank you very much. It's eye opening. Um, I know we hear it every so often, but yeah, every time we see it's like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, I think um Carrie said it well. We need to engage in a community wide discussion around the data and really engage families um and students too as well, um, about some of the needs there.
I think it's, I think it's identifying, it's a a community conversation about identifying the needs and I think also the wants, right? Like, what do we want our students to leave the Hingham Public Schools with, right? I hear so frequently from people saying, oh, my kid's off at college now and they're so well prepared, like even almost over prepared. And I think to myself, well, that's great on the one hand, could the high school experience have been a little easier? You know what I mean? A little more, less socially and emotionally taxing on kids if it was taken down a notch. But I think that's also a community con- conversation to have and to understand what people in the community need and want.
Yep. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
All right, 7.5 is to discuss equity plan goals for the year and act as appropriate.
Um, so we specifically wanted to come back to you and be responsive to the equity audit that we shared in June. Um, this highlights for you um some goals for this coming school year. We chose specifically to focus um on just one year, um really trying to be responsive to the audit and really trying to respond um to what we really felt we could accomplish in a year and really set out some goals um to move forward with some of the concerns that came up um in the audit. Um, so you'll see that it's um developed around four broad goals. Um, and then really specifically highlighting some objectives and um timeline for trying to address um some of those areas.
Sure, yes. So again, those four um areas that we'll be focusing in on, um, want to stress that this is not um inclusive of everything we are doing. Equity is woven into every aspect of every plan um that we do, but for the purposes of responding specifically to um some of the recommendations coming out of the equity audit, um was really our lens um for this particular um narrow set of goals. Um, so coming out of the equity audit, um, was um some recommendations around um having, ensuring that students have access to culturally responsive uh curriculum and materials that um children can see themselves um in the curriculum, that their interests, cultures and so on, um are represented um in the curriculum. And so we have um some goals around um auditing our uh curriculum, unit guides, instructional materials, uh media, uh supplementary materials, uh classroom environments and so on. Um, taking a look at um the culling process as well. Um, there are some older materials um that we can um uh cull. Um, and also in the realm of curriculum and instruction, uh really linking this work to uh everything we've discussed around universal design for learning and inclusive practices. Um, and so though the goal is um centered around curriculum, again, the instructional practices that we have um brought forth again and again in um in our presentations is woven uh throughout um all of the equity work that we do. Um, as we have said, related to the strategic plan, so many of the initiatives are related to professional development, that we have a fairly lengthy list of um PD initiatives that are intersecting uh with the equity work. Um, so as you're aware, our district equity, uh our district administrators um are working in a equity PLC uh with monthly meetings and conversations um to drive some of this work forward. Uh, we have um Plymouth River and East participating in the DUCI Inclusive Practice Academy. Um, Heather mentioned earlier, the S three academy, um, working with the um, Hef has been terrific in funding um our inclusive uh practice fellows. Um, so a variety of the um professional development offerings are centered around um equity. Um, the list is fairly lengthy. Um, we also set some goals around hiring, um and have again, some partnerships with DUCI, um, the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, um, has been a great partner in um encouraging us to think about how we uh retain, recruit um staff. Uh, we also are looking at some of our protocols around hiring to uh ensure that uh we are bias free and um looking uh to um diversify our staff. Um, we also um are setting a number of goals around data. Um, everything we have discussed earlier this year around MTSS is an inherently equitable practice. So MTSS is really probably one of the most equitable uh practices um that we can engage in um to ensure that all students are finding success. Um, so really continuing our emphasis in our data presentations um to not only look at the aggregate, but also to disaggregate into um the various subgroups. Um, and so um we will um continue that practice and then expand it um across all of the data that we look at. Uh, Rick and Derek mentioned this evening, um really diving into our SEL data, now looking at some of the subgroups um there, which is not um a metric that we have uh really analyzed before, but in um taking that same MTSS approach that we've used in the academic sphere um to look at the SEL environment, um continuing um to strengthen our SEL MTSS tiered systems of support. Um, you'll be hearing uh much more in the coming weeks um about uh the program evaluation of our special education services. Um, so while you will not see many explicit goals written in here, um, this particular plan, uh where it is a one-year plan, um coming out of that uh comprehensive um program evaluation, there will be some additional goal setting. Uh, and we are looking um to um implement a a annual climate survey, um that will help us track and monitor the progress of some of this equity work and um measure some of the impact of these various initiatives.
I would just also add in goal one, you'll see um the decap as well, the district curriculum accommodation plan, um which is a way to to edit and revise. The last time it was looked at was 2018, um to just update that with um a lens to universal design for learning. Um, we've definitely learned a lot, um, and kids have changed in the last five years. Um, and to revise it um as a way to s- to indicate what are the accommodations that can make um our general education program accessible um for all students. So um, we'll work on that and hope to have a final draft by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just just one thought. Uh, I know we're talking about special ed is sort of uh as part of the, the uh special ed department review. It's a student services department review. Uh, I think the other goals that you have were special ed, like special ed kids can see themselves reflected in the literature, special people with disabilities can, you know, feel connected. I don't know, it's just, there's, it's a little bit broader than just the academic services, the special ed.
Absolutely. Again, anytime you see inclusive practices written into that goal, that is referring to all of our students, inclusive of special education.
I know, I just wanted to make that explicit.
Yeah, thank you. That was a great point.
I think also universal design for learning is a way to make um the classroom, the learning environment, the school um accessible for all students as well. So it's a way of thinking about how we design our instruction and our learning environment so that everybody has an access point um to the standards, to the goals of the lesson.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. You want a motion? Yes. To approve? Um, I will make a motion to um approve the district equity plan for the 2023, 2024 school year.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much for pulling that together. Um, okay, so um 7.6 to complete the first read of policies, BA, BD, FA, E3. I don't know if I said that right, but I'm gonna pass it over to Ally.
So this is just a first read. We are jumping in on the policy committee to um ten or goals per year right after that. So there will be a section for you. And for just a note for those in the policy committee, if you notice, there's not all the ones that were reviewed in here, that's because some of the recommendations that we decided not to accept, um, when we went back and looked at the actual policies, it meant that we didn't have anything to recommend changing. So I thought I'd simplify it since we had a long meeting. So we went through the um first half of the B policies, which mostly focused on school committee um kind of operations and administrative items and school councils. And these were changes recommended by um MASC, not mask policies, M-A-S-C policies. And so they're just, the first few just have a couple of very small um edits to them that they recommended that we thought we'd bring to the full committee. So the first one on our operational goals, there was one minor word change from problems to concerns. And then we thought that instead of just establishing practical and smart district goals, which was the recommendation, we would update it to smarty goals. And then we have what that entails below for everyone to look at. Um, the next one, again, some very minor wording changes from all students or to all students and to HVS district. And then BBBA and BBBB, they had one line that they thought that we should remove and that's redlined in there. And then on BBBE, just following along with gender neutral terminology, this is updated from select men to select board. So we've been trying to make sure that we catch anything new coming through to make those changes and then.
A few of those selectmen hanging out there.
There's still a few selectmen in there. Mostly newer policies that came through. And then the final two policies were a combination, there were four policies, they were somewhat redundant, so there's not any actual changes in the wording, but just combination of school councils with the school council, um, or I'm sorry, the school improvement plans in the school councils being combined from four policies down into two and getting all that language in there. So tonight is just the first read if anyone has any questions and then we will bring it back. You know, you'll all be very excited to have it back again next meeting to vote on. Any questions?
Thank you.
We have, and we just want to make sure Alex gets enough sleep.
I can get on board with that. All right, so we will discuss and vote um at the next meeting. Um, all right, so seven point, my eyes are crossed now. 7.7 to review rates for interventionist tutors and act as appropriate. I take it Ayesha Opang will take us through this.
Thank you. Um, so in terms of our interventionists, um, this is one group of um employees that we um, we think we should. should move forward to increase the, because they're not part of a set union group, they just follow guidelines for them at the moment. One of our budget increases, at least for the rate change, was a 2.5% increase as far as budget was concerned, so we thought we'd move forward that increase from $36.3 per hour to $37.03 per hour. And the paraprofessional substitute rate, we thought that we should go ahead and move forward to increase that as well. That rate will now be aligned with the first step of the current paraprofessional contract. And just to get a vote from you, please, just to approve those two rate increases.
Any questions?
Just to clarify, so the interventionist is a 2.5% increase over last year's rate, and the paraprofessional subrate is going to align with Step 1 of the paraprofessional contract. Okay.
Representing 9.74% increase, that's right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion. All right, I will move to increase the rate for interventionists to $37.03 an hour for the school year July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and to pay any interventionist who worked prior to October 2nd, 2023, a retroactive pay adjustment, and to increase the current paraprofessional substitute rate to $17.45 an hour effective September 28th, 2023.
That's the beginning of this week.
Okay, got it.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so to review, we did that, so 7.8 went with that, 7.9?
Jumped ahead.
Nope, that's okay. To discuss the donation from Hingham Sports Partnership for the Hingham High School Wellness Center and act as appropriate. I take it Ayesha's going to take this again?
So we're thankful to the Hingham Sports Partnership for them pushing forward the donation and the building of a new wellness center at the high school. The school committee approved that the building two years ago, and right now we receive the donation of $100,000 from the Hingham Sports Partnership. And as part of that donation, we'll be using those funds to begin the process of getting an OPM for the project and as well as a designer for the project. So these are the first steps in terms of the procurement that's necessary to get things going, so hopefully to get construction going as soon as those things have, those steps have been taken. So we just wanted to get your approval tonight of that $100,000 donation, and also to get your approval on opening up a new account with the town of Hingham revolving account for that donation as well.
Good. Alex?
Just a quick question, so we accept the initial donation, and then hopefully this will not happen, but for some reason they can't raise all the funds for the rest of it. What happens, have we already just committed those funds, and, or do we need to return them to Hingham Sports Partnership?
Right, so if it is that the building, they're not able to complete the building, or they haven't raised enough funds, then I think it would be, because the funds are specifically for that purpose, in terms of, from what we've received, we cannot use the funds for any other purpose, but for what it has been designated for. So if it is that we are not able to, I assume that the goal for the sports partnership is up until December of this year, but I'm sure that in terms of, if they didn't meet that goal at the end of December, I don't think there's anything saying that they couldn't extend the goal beyond that timeframe. So I think that it would have, we have to have the discussion with the school committee and the sports partnership to decide next steps in terms of that.
And I was going to have them come in soon to give an update on where they are in their process. They had given the finance subcommittee an update, so I thought it might be worth it for them to come to the full school committee soon and just give us an update on where they are and where they think we're headed.
Just to give you an idea as well, one of the reasons for accepting this donation as well is that we cannot begin any procurement unless we have an available amount of money allotted for that. So that was important for us to be able to, for them to make that first step and allow us to start the process. But then even, anything that we do will be subject to the full amount of the funding as well.
My question is, did, have we approved the Wellness Center?
We, at the time, I believe we went and took a poll, actually it was, we just basically said we would be, we would welcome them to move forward with the plan, so I don't know if we actually ever voted on it, we just all agreed that we wanted them to move forward and look into it.
Okay. Take that back.
You should approve the fundraising efforts.
Yes. Yeah, that's right.
And the other, just a comment, should we be, when we're making the motion, should we be specifying the name of the revolving account?
Um, yes, please.
Okay.
Or the purpose?
The actual name of it?
I think the purpose of the account is...
Just the purpose, okay.
Most important in terms of what the funds, those funds can be used for.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, my only concern is what Ally raised too. That's what I, that's the only thing I'm grappling with. So if we take this money, and then they don't raise enough, then... I mean, I don't think there's a mechanism for us to return it to them, so it feels like it's a donation, or the purpose of creating this seed money to begin the procurement The only thing I just, what if, but what if they don't get the, or if they don't raise enough money to do it, then, then... I mean, there's, I'm just saying, there's so many, like, we have an athletic revolving fund, that it feels like, well, hey, just to be clear, if you're not able to do this, that $100,000 has to stay here, and we could reallocate it to the athletic revolving account or to the turf field. You know what I mean? Like, there's other things that the money could be used for, I just don't know if that needs to be part of?
I think we'd have to go back to HSP and get permission, yeah, because they were specific in the letter that they issued with the check.
Yep. But that's what I'm wondering, can they be specific?
They can be. Any grant we, or any donation we receive, it can be restricted.
Okay, so if it is restrictive to this purpose, and then they don't, they raised $900,000 and are not able to do it, then what do we do with the money?
So I think, I mean, as I said before, I think it really is, I mean, they've given themselves a short time frame. If it is that they've decided, we can decide that on our own, for example, as a company, you can decide that, okay, you've done the initial work for it, it's something that you value as well, that, it could be that you may decide as well that you may want to get financing from the town as well, there are many things that you can decide, right?
It can sit there for a while.
It can sit there for years in terms of, maybe some, if this group is not successful in terms of raising funds over the next couple of years, maybe somebody else will pick it up again, maybe they decide to go and get additional financing, right? So it all depends on your goals for the high school as well.
Or could they ultimately destitute it?
And they could do that as well.
They could, yeah. They could take a vote more likely, right? They could, they could take a vote to allow the Hingham Public Schools to keep the funds and for another purpose.
Do they understand that that's the process, that if they don't, they're not successful in reaching their goal for fundraising, that the money stays in that account? Do they know that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So will we, will we be discussing during the budget, the upcoming budget cycles, any additional costs that this will occur at the district?
I think that, I think that at this moment in time, I don't have that information, but I think as part of the process of, of the planning for it, et cetera, similar to, similar to what we did at Foster, when we were going to build Foster, we looked at the staffing model for it and everything else, I think we'll have to go through the same kind of evaluation as well.
I think our intent to HSP is that the amount raised isn't sufficient to be able to complete the project, and I think they are working towards that goal as well.
And this is the required step, because they need to get the architect to figure out what the actual costs are. So they have the idea that, that they had come up with, but this will help solidify that price tag and how to move forward. And just, you know, based on updates that I got from them, they want to be as involved as possible so that not everything is falling on Ayesha and Dr. Adams' plate. So we talked about just having frequent meetings and updates with them so that we can make sure that the process is moving forward. Some of the concerns too is with the fundraising, there are people who are willing to donate now, because their kids are actually in the schools now, and they don't want to miss that opportunity, so, but there is a process that we have to go through, and, you know, this is, this is just part of it, I think this is the big first step. But I can ask them to come in for an update in the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, I think that would be very prudent to do, because, I mean, I mean, to be all honest, I mean, this was two years ago, the landscape's changed a little bit, right? I mean, there's just a massive, two massive overrides for capital improvement, so I don't, personally don't know that, like, this, if, this, the idea behind this was fully funded through donations with, with the district bearing no costs, and I think that we just have to be very clear that that would be the expectation.
And Shelby also met with them during the finance, the finance committee level as well.
Okay.
And they came in to give a presentation at the finance and capital committee level, so that was also helpful in terms of where they stood and what their needs are as well, and what our needs are too.
Right. So do we think it's helpful for them to come in with an update now, or go through the process to hire the architect and then come in after that, or both?
I mean, from my perspective, the information that we, that we receive from them at the committee level, maybe it'd be good for the rest of the committee to hear and to see what is happening. We also spoke about, for example, our current needs in terms of our space issue as well, and how that we're, are we making moves together with Katie to get a costing of that as well too. So these are some, some concerns that we have too, that, and that we've discussed as part of that meeting.
Yeah.
So do we want to do this now, or do we, does that?
I think so, because we want to move forward with the getting an architect, and we can't do that without any, funding from them initially.
And we need to know some of that in order to figure out exactly what the cost will be.
That's right.
Okay. All right, so then I would make a motion to accept a donation of $100,000 from Hingham Sports Partnership as seed money to initiate the procurement process for the construction of the HAM High School Wellness Center, and to approve the creation of a special revolving account to be used specifically for donations received for the HAM High School Wellness Project.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 7.10 to discuss grants and act as appropriate. Did I see anything else in addition to this one, or no?
No, just this one. There's a report on Title 1, and Title 2.
Oh, that's what I saw, okay.
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier this year, last year, Hingham did not qualify for Title 1 funds. This year, due to changing socioeconomic profile, we are once again a Title 1 district. And the way the Title 1 funds are allocated is by the level of need at various schools as defined by free and reduced lunch. And so the three schools who will be targeted with Title 1 funds this year include Plymouth River, Hingham Middle School, and Foster School. And studies show that after-school tutoring is a very effective use of Title 1 funds, and so that is the direction that we will be headed this year with the nearly $60,000 we have in Title 1 funds. Title 2 funds are intended, we're going to be targeting those funds for professional development around universal design and inclusive practices. So we're excited to move forward with both of those grants. And one thing just to note is that with both grants, we have an obligation to provide equitable share to our local private schools. And so, for example, today's presentation by Jessica Minahan, we did invite in some of our colleagues at some of the resident private schools who joined us for that professional development. So that's one of the ways that we can collaborate and share in the Title 2 funds. We did not this year qualify for Title 4 funds, I'm still trying to seek guidance from the state on that. So against the changing landscape year to year, we're never quite sure how much grant money we will have and which grants we will qualify for, but these two are secure.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, so...
Do we devote to accept Title 1 funding grants?
I don't think so.
They're entitlement grants?
No, they're not, they weren't included as part of the budget, so...
Okay. So, now?
Probably should, would you think so?
Does say.
Yeah, because they aren't part of the budget.
Okay.
Is it part of FY '25, or is it what we're receiving now?
At the time, we wouldn't have known how much we would have received, we're not sure that we even would have got Title 1.
But when do we receive the funds?
Once we begin to get approval from this, from the federal government.
Yes, once the state approves it, yes.
Would be in FY '24.
Yes.
Yes, it is in FY '24.
So should we wait to approve it once the state approves it?
I think we're close to...
I think it's a matter of, we receive word from the state that we are approved, so it's a matter of a signature.
These are entitlements, so we're entitled to the grant, it's not, as long as we fill out the paperwork and meet the specifics of the grant.
It's not discretionary.
Right.
You probably should, why don't you just make a motion?
I cannot, I cannot agree to this, right? All right, I will make a motion to accept entitlement grant totaling $61,275 of Title 1 funding for after-school tutoring to at-risk students at Plymouth River School, Hingham Middle School, and Foster School.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And then to accept Title 2 entitlement grant funding of $45,462, that would be utilized for professional development within the district.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, all right, 7.11, I don't think we have anything this week, review surplus, okay. So thank you very much. We'll move over to Item 8, Subcommittee and Project Reports, and Warren signed, head over to Matt.
Okay, so special ed, I think since we last met, the special ed subcommittee had our first meeting on September 13th, where we discussed goals for the year, was the main focus. CPAC also had their first meeting on September 19th, that I attended along with Margaret and Bartlet Cataldo. They discussed their goals, I had the opportunity to talk about our subcommittee goals, and there was definitely a fairly robust discussion around paras and the shortage there, so I think good discussion there. And we have already scheduled our next subcommittee meeting for October 25th, and it will be a hybrid option, so we're going to try and do in-person then, soon, see how that goes. And then HAF, we also had our first meeting of the year, they had their first meeting of the year on September 12th. It was kind of an initial introduction to four new members. Big focus is on the spelling bee, which is coming up on November 5th. Registration, I believe, just opened last night, so that's exciting, and I know they were already seeing a lot of people sign up for it. The only, the only other thing that was a part of that discussion is they were interested in if the school committee, or less school committee, the administration, I guess, had a specific goal in mind for, as they think about their fundraising for the year, I guess a few years ago, they did, I don't know what it was called, something towards technology.
Interseiz.
Yeah, exactly, and they felt like that was really helpful to have, like, a focused effort, so I think they're interested if, if, you know, we were to come, you all were to come and say, you know, these are the top, this is the top area, or these are the top two or three areas, might allow them to better fundraise in the future, so.
Great.
And I think that's it.
Thank you. Ally?
Policy...
Policy had their first meeting a few weeks ago, and you're already seeing the fruits of that, that effort. We have another meeting on the 18th, and then Hingham Arts has their first board meeting next Tuesday night.
We had our first educational programming Subcommittee meeting on the 26th, and again, you saw a lot of that good work here tonight, it was much of the meeting. And so we'll have another meeting late October, early November, it hasn't been scheduled yet. And the SNAP 10-year anniversary gala, not really a gala, it's a party, celebration, not a gala, was actually, and now is postponed until the spring. So it was supposed to be later this, in a couple of weeks this month, it will be, will plan for a better event in the spring.
Yep. Cool. The middle school council met today, and for the first time, school off to a good start. There was a lot of talk about the positive mood in the building from the teachers, the administrators, and the parents, and everyone felt very positive and like things have finally settled back to normal, so that was nice. Talked about hiring paras and a second nurse for the middle school in that process. The clubs have started, they created a directory of clubs with descriptions and contact information this year, so that should hopefully help for families. They are introducing unified sports, which is so exciting. So they're going to start with bocce, because it's a very easy entry point, so it's a good way to get it. And they have eight athletes, and then they're going to match them up with some peer models. And then the goal of planning a March Madness basketball tournament later, and then that they'll compete against other schools, so that's really good to see. And then Derek mentioned that they're working with the Anti-Defamation League this year, and they've done some professional development on identity and anti-bias training, so that was good news. Salary negotiations, we continue to work with five bargaining units, and we have two that are pending, we'll be probably starting with them sometime this year. And, yes, we've met 10 times with HEA Unit A, which is our teachers, and we've met 13 times with HEA Unit B, the paraprofessionals. We've also worked with the, we had our first meeting with HEA Unit C, the custodians, and we've had two meetings with the Bus Drivers Union and HEA Unit D, which is the administrative assistants, and it's been just very collegial and collaborative, so we thank them for that. And if anyone wants to, we're going to, we're trying to make a good effort to keep the community updated on negotiations, so on the Hingham Public Schools page, there's a contract negotiations button there if anyone wants to do it, and we'll keep updating it as we go.
Great, thank you. So, I mean, beginning of September, if I remember, our last meeting, and we're working on scheduling our next, our next few meetings going, we have a budget cycle. And there are warrants.
Great, thank you.
Sure, I don't have a lot, other than I reached out to Millie Abahay Thomas, just because there's a supplemental budget potentially coming from the state, so I was reaching out to ask what, if any advocacy we could help with that. I'm assuming it doesn't have any impact on bringing students in this year, since the school year would already be underway, but I think it would help them with their Metgo 2.0 initiative that I'm sure we will learn more about when we are there, it's the end of the month, yes. And, it begins up.
Okay. I have two updates. I met Foster School Council on, when, the 25th, and we talked about the building project update, we talked about the school naming process, English immersion classes, and started talking through some of the MCAS results, because we had just received that. And then also, not a Subcommittee, but at our planning session, we had to appoint a delegate to represent us at the annual conference, and Ally Anderson so graciously stepped up and we appointed her, so thank you very much. But now, as a result, we have resolutions to vote on, so you might have all received this packet in the mail, and there are, in the back, there are eight resolutions. And if you don't have them, Matt, I can send them to you, they're online.
I just came on Friday, so.
Yeah, it was good timing. So there are eight resolutions, and I thought we could all take one and present at the next meeting and vote on it. Ally graciously accepted taking two so that we all could get one, and she would take the last, remaining one. So if that all works for you guys, we'll just have you present a quick summary of what it is, and then we'll vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so Matt, do you want to take number one?
Sure.
Ally, you take two and three. Tim, four.
Sure.
Carrie, five. Jen, six. I'll take seven. Michelle, take eight. Thank you very much. Okay. So then, number nine, any other items not to reasonably known within 48 hours? Has anyone had anything? Okay. Before we get to adjourning, our next School Committee meeting is on Monday, October 16th at 6:30. Very exciting, on Monday, October 30th, we're going to have, we are going to have a meeting at Metgo headquarters, so I'm not sure, Alex, whether you want to join, you're welcome to join, we're going to have a bus that goes there and have dinner there, and then we'll have a presentation from the president there. So that will be on October 30th, and we are working on getting a Zoom link so that people who want to listen in on Millie's presentation can do that. Okay. Say again?
Numbers, put up again, can we have the bus?
Yeah, and we'll have a bus to head up there.
Okay, yep, so Zoom option and a bus heading up there.
Yep. All right, so number 10.
Is that me? All right, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, not to return, I already declared, for the purposes of, to approve minutes from executive session held September 11th, 2023, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
To provide an update on negotiations with HEA Unit A, B, C, and D, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
And to provide an update on negotiation with the Bus Drivers Union, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
Ally, second. And I will second.
All right, we'll take a roll call. Matt?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Tim? Carrie? Jen? Michelle? Aye. And I'm an I as well. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.